I have called to order the city council regular meeting for Monday, May 16th, and I would ask for us to do the roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Garrett?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor, Councilmember Jennings?
Here.
Councilmember Canaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller. Madam Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. I would invite everyone in the audience and that's online to say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we do the approval agenda, I would take a motion to excuse Councilwoman Miller and Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Motion to excuse Members Cantor and Miller.
Need a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Canaz?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the agenda, and I would ask for an adjustment under action request to move or add changing our council date from 6/20 to 6/27, because June 20th is a, you said it was a holiday? Yes. And I would make that A, and then, excuse me, yeah, A, and then push everything else down, so.
Can you repeat it so I can make the motion?
So the motion is to change our city council meeting from June 20th to June 27th. That would be the action item. Other than that, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as stated and adjusted.
Okay, so motion to approve the agenda with the change of our next, our June 20th meeting to June 27th. Is that correct?
Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion regarding the approval of the agenda with the change of our city council meeting from June 20th to June 27th? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Canaz?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Now, we have public comments for items that are on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak in the audience first and then on Zoom? Nope. Anybody on Zoom? Okay. Anybody wanting to speak? About any items that's on the agenda? All right, then, I am moving on to the consent agenda. I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda. Our items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the city council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and discussed separately immediately after consent agenda approval in its normal sequence on the regular agenda. Take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved in second. There is no discussion of it, so I would take a roll call of it.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Canaz?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Now, we'll move on to action requests for consideration and approval. First up is going to be the change of the city council meeting from June 20th to June 27th. And we just want to explain... Very easy.
Yes, Mayor and Council, June 20th is a holiday for the city. It's our Juneteenth day, and since that falls on a Sunday, the following Monday would be a holiday for the city. So, since we will not be in the office on that day, we would have to move the council meeting to the next Monday, which would be the 27th of June.
Thank you. Have a motion to change it.
Motion to change our June 20th meeting for Juneteenth to June 27th, the next Monday in June.
I have a second?
Second.
Pardon me?
Second.
Oh, sorry. It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Canaz?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up is going to be the consideration to, consideration adoption of electric vehicle zoning ordinance amendments, and I believe that this is going to be our first read?
Correct. First reading, and so council will read through it, and it's not going to be approved, a final approval at this stage. And I believe it's been in the works for a while. If you look at the memorandum prepared by Giffords Webster, it appears that they, this discussion started back in October, and then there was a presentation to the Planning Commission, which, from the Clean Energy Partners explanation, a company met with the Planning Commission, and so as a result of that, the changes that you see in RED to your packet information arose from that discussion. So this has been reviewed by the Planning Commission, and there was not any prior, prior regulations for the electric charging vehicles, and I think it's, as if you have read through the memo, and that it says something that is moving forward in our society and just with the way things are going, more electric vehicles, and so the Planning Commission has decided it's good to get ahead of that and to make some regulations so that those kind of facilities can be here in Lathir Village. So, yep, if there's, this is the first reading, and again, if there's any changes just from a procedural point of view, council can make those changes, and then it goes to second reading if there's any tweaks, or if they see anything that they wish, they think needs to go back to Planning Commission, they can also make that recommendation today if there's something that they see that they think needs to be reviewed by the Planning Commission again.
Okay. Thank you. Need a motion?
Motion to consider the adoption of electric vehicle zoning ordinance amendments.
First reading.
First reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second for consideration of adoption of electric vehicle zoning ordinance amendments for the first reading. Is there any discussion?
So again, so we're just talking about the RED, correct?
No, we're actually talking about the entire, the entire thing is brand new. And so the RED is just what was like a most recent, this has been in the works for a while, and then that was like a second addition to it. So previously, there was, unless I'm speaking, there are no, no regulations at all in your zoning ordinance related to the electric vehicle charging stations.
Okay, so.
So it's gonna be a whole new thing.
All right, well, I'll try to ask my questions, and if no one knows, then it's okay. But, so I see in the recommendation, it says, "The Planning Commission may wish to discuss whether EV stations should be required for new non-single-family residential developments." So I was hoping maybe, since we have a new apartment building that's in the works that hasn't been, they're not complete yet, but would they be considered to have this, you know, the EV stations?
Yeah, I think that that would be something that would have to be added as a new regulation for that to, to the existing ordinance that would not be, is not addressed by this, but if council thinks that's a good idea, definitely that can go back to Planning Commission that if council approves this, this ordinance, then additional.
We can add additional.
Correct, to other sections that apply, because this, yeah, this doesn't apply to every, to that situation in particular. If that makes sense.
I was just waiting for you. She said, "Does that make sense?"
Oh, you said, I'm sorry, I apologize. It does, it does make sense.
Sorry about that. Yeah, just where it would specifically, you know, require that development then to account for that. But this is, this ordinance itself just does give, you know, adds a definition and does give the regulations for the infrastructure for that, but isn't requiring it to be, a spot to be provided for that in a certain location. So that, that is something to consider if council does approve this to move forward with more, you know, specific location regulations.
Okay. Will we, will we also be able to determine, I think I'm okay with the overall ordinance, but I'm curious about, like, what is the benefit, I guess, for the city, like, you know, because I know the charging stations aren't free, so I'm curious what would be the benefit to Lathir? And I also saw that lighting needs to be implemented in those areas, so are we covering the lighting and things of that nature? Like, who's actually, who would actually install the EVs?
Right, I think there's a question, or the group, it looks like, and I apologize, I think Jill or Suzie would be better equipped to answer that, so I do apologize, but in general, I'm thinking that these, the companies that want to install that, they want to have their, their infrastructure here, you know, there would be an agreement worked out as far as what they would be willing to do with the infrastructure part of it like that, and then the charging, generally, it's charged to the users. So the users would be paying for that when they go to plug in.
Right, right.
And then it would be advantageous to the city because we're providing a place where if people have those type of vehicles, they can come and be in the city and, you know, shop here or do whatever as well, so that kind of works that way. Sometimes they, and again, I don't know with this, I know sometimes they will like offer a free, you know, something free or just so that they can be the ones chosen to be in here. But I'm not totally sure what the, what the competition is for that or how that works, but I don't think, I mean, it shouldn't be something that's going to be a great expense to the city once it gets situated.
Because it might not necessarily be on the city's property, because an individual business owner could also.
Correct, yes.
Have it on there.
Right, yes.
Would addressing a limitation of these be advantageous? I mean, I don't.
I mean, I, that began, the planner would be better to address that, but just from my, the top of my head, if this is the way society is going to go and to try and be proactive, I don't think the limitation would be of a useful thing. I mean, it'd probably be supply and demand. I feel like if you get them and they're not, no one's using them, well then, there's no limit because no one's going to want to put more in. But if they become very useful and popular, then we wouldn't want to limit because we want to have stability to get more in, if that's what people need.
Is there something in there if they weren't being used and they were falling apart, a recommendation for removal?
That would be, I.
I think that's in F, maintenance?
Maintenance?
Yep.
But it doesn't, I didn't see that it said removal.
It says, "Shall result in space ceasing?"
Ceasing?
Business hours.
Ceasing to count or towards required?
Right. So it's like, this is also towards if a business, the parking requirements require so many parking spaces under the planning, under the zoning ordinance for, depending on what the certain business usage is, so it's also, it'd be an advantage towards, for that business if they have this, that they get counted towards their required parking requirement or number of parking spaces. So they're saying that if they don't, if they fail to maintain it, then they can't count that towards their parking requirement, but it doesn't specifically address, you're right, removal. But whatever company is, is going to be chosen, that's usually, would be something negotiated probably with, with the individual company that is putting those in, that if they cease to function or whatever, that they be removed, but that would be something I would think that would be, like, in the contract for whatever company's going to eventually. Oh, it's not going to go for a second?
No.
Okay.
We need to amend the motion?
So apparently, this is the only.
The only one?
The only reading.
Okay.
And then it'll be upper adoption at this point.
So does Councilman Jennings have to amend his motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Move to adopt.
Pardon me?
Yeah, a motion to, to adopt, not just to consider adopt, well, consider adoption, but yes, we're considering now, but a new motion to actually adopt it if council is satisfied with.
Adoption of it opposed to the first reading, I had to say, I apologize.
That's okay.
So you're gonna amend it.
I guess I'm concerned why, why we're just not figuring out, figuring this out.
I know, I'm not.
Well, it does say consider adoption of.
You're right, you're right.
It doesn't say first reading, and I text Suzie Stack.
And actually, to clarify, there's different rules, and I apologize. I did get in touch with Scott, and we have, townships have different adoption rules versus a city, and a city does, this would be considered the second reading because the actual first reading was Planning Commission, and that is where they did hold public hearings as well.
Okay.
So that was fully noticed, if you have any concerns embargoed on your end as well, with your comfort level, that it was noticed as required by law for a public hearing. So the, the general public is, had notice of it and had the opportunity to come and make comments at that Planning Commission meeting.
Okay. So, to make a new motion, so I would like to move that we adopt the electric vehicle zoning ordinance amendments.
And is there a second? A second does not mean that you agree to this.
I know, I'll second it.
Oh, okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Canaz?
No.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next action request is for the city budget fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is to set a public hearing for June 27th on the budget. The final budget would be, I have, they have a public hearing set for June 27th.
And that would be based off of the, the date that we just changed?
Actually, it was changed before I got this. Never hurts to do it twice.
Anybody like to make a motion for?
So we need to, I'm gonna make the motion, I'm sorry. I'll make the motion. So I would like to make a motion to approve or for a public hearing for the fiscal year 2022, 2023, city budget draft.
No, it probably should say, "You'd like to set the public hearing."
Oh, okay.
For the city budget fiscal year 2022, 2023, June 27th.
Recommended it.
You don't want to put draft in there because it's going to be original.
Right, okay. Say it one more time.
What?
Say it one more time. Like to make a motion.
You'd like to make a motion to set the public hearing for the city budget fiscal year 2022, 2023, and June 27th, 2022.
Okay. All right, so I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing for the fiscal year 2022, 2023, city budget. Wow, there we go.
Second. It's been moved in second to accept the city budget fiscal year 2022, 2023 to be the.
Oh, on June 27th.
On June 27th for the public hearing. Is there any discussion, any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Canaz?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next, we have the resolution for the NO MO May. It's designating the month of May 2022 as NO MO May. This is, I'll just read it. "Whereas the city of Lathir Village is keen to develop and implement a program to create or expand pollinator-friendly habitat on public and private land to galvanize the community and adopt sustainable pollinator-friendly land management practices. And whereas the city of Lathir Village is in a unique position to significantly increase pollinator-friendly habitat by encouraging pollinator-friendly lawn care practices and by incentivizing its citizens to take direct and meaningful action on their own properties. And whereas ideal pollinator-friendly habitat is comprised of mostly native wildflowers, grasses, vines, shrubs, and trees blooming in succession throughout the growing season. It's free or nearly free of pesticides, is comprised of undisturbed spaces under, including leaf and brush piles, un-mown fields or field margins, fallen trees, and other dead wood for nesting and overwintering, and provides connectivity between habitat areas to support pollinator movement and resilience. And whereas the formative period for establishment of pollinator and other insect species and the many songbirds and other urban wildlife species which depend upon them occurs in late spring and early summer when they emerge from dormancy and require flowering plants as crucial foraging habitat. And these opportunities are dramatically reduced when early spring leaf litter removal and grass mowing, and grass mowing. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Lathir Village, along with their partnering organizations jointly recognize NO MO May to actively promote and educate the community about the critical period of pollinator emergence, generation of crucial pollinator-supporting habitat and early spring foraging opportunities. And be it further resolved that for the duration of the month of May, the city of Lathir Village should suspend the enforcement of Chapter 82 article," you know, I have this at 15, yes, thank you, I'll just go with that. "weeds and noxious growth and voluntarily delay homeowner lawn care pesticides until June, allowing pollinator species to emerge and early flowering grasses and porbits to establish, which may result in ground covering exceeding established ordinance height restriction and that during the month of May, the city of Lathir Village should not issue citations for excessive weed growth." Anyone want to make a motion to accept that?
I will make a motion to accept the NO MO May resolution.
Is there a second?
To accept that? No.
I'll make the motion for, I'll do the second on it. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Canaz?
No.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I interrupt? I would like to return to the action request A, considering adoption of the ordinance amendment.
Okay.
Just to point out that it, due to the fact that there was a vote of two to one, adoption of ordinance amendments require a majority of the entire council regardless of who is here. So therefore, that motion did fail, which does not mean it cannot be put on another, the next meeting agenda where more council.
So is Monday, Monday is a special meeting, isn't it? Or no, it's not. Okay, so then you just, if you can remember, just to put that on the.
27th.
27th. It's up to that time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have.
I'm sorry, yes, Monday is a special meeting.
The 23rd, that's what I thought.
Oh, yeah.
So we can actually adopt it on the 23rd, so we can do it on Monday?
As long as it gets noticed.
Oh, do, do it for June.
I mean, it just needs 18 hours.
Okay, do it for the 23rd.
Can we just do it for the 27th or no?
Just do it for the 27th. Let's forget it. Just do it for the 27th.
Okay.
Thank you. Any switch back and forth again? No? Okay. Next is a resolution for the Mayor's Monarch Pledge. I was approached by the National Wildlife Federation to take the monarchs, it's actually monarchs and pollinator pledge day, and I'm sorry, but I'm losing my voice, so I'm going to skip down to 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, to the fifth one. I'm trying to see whether or not there's something that. So today, I, Michael Kelly Garrett, signed the National Wildlife Federation's Mayor's Monarch Pledge and have, it's actually Mayor's Monarch and Pollinator Pledge, and have officially committed to taking meaningful action to protect the monarch butterfly and pollinators. And will you, while I'm saying all this, will you address what I'm putting in here?
Yes.
Before we sign it? Or is this what they actually signed? Because I, sorry, I apologize. This is what they actually sent?
Yes.
Oh.
That's what they actually sent.
Okay, so forget what I said about the pollinators, but online it says pollinators, okay, I apologize. "Have officially committed to taking meaningful action to protect the monarch butterfly. And city of Lathir Village has committed to planting pollinator-friendly species on city-owned properties, encouraging, promoting, and providing resources for residents. Wishing to establish pollinator gardens and developing local property maintenance ordinance are sustainable and wildlife-friendly, and every resident of city of Lathir Village can make a difference for the monarch by planting native milkweed and nectar plants to provide habitat for the monarch and pollinators in locations where people live, work, learn, play, and worship. And whereas city of Lathir Village has committed to NO MO May and the, I'm sorry, and the planting of flowers that attract monarchs. Now, therefore, I, Michael and Kelly, by virtue of the authority vested in me, mayor of the city of Lathir Village, do hereby proclaim May 16th, 2022, as Mayor's Monarch Pledge Day in the city of Lathir Village, encouraging all residents to participate in community activities that celebrate and support monarch conservation." And you might want to address that. At the bottom, it just says, "022, not 2022." I'd like to make a.
Does this require, I thought resolutions?
No, but we'll just roll.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Mayor's Monarch Pledge Resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Canaz?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next, I was approached by the United Way for Southeastern Michigan in this 21-day equity challenge, and the reason I'm going to read all of this because though I was asked not to bring this up, but I am going to bring it up this time because we have been inundated with racist emails to the entire council with horrible pictures of council people, and I think that it's really important that Lathir people on council and residents agree to or think about participating in the United Ways, United Ways 21-day equity challenge. And I'll read to you what it is. "Whereas the city of Lathir Village stands firmly against racism and discrimination in all forms. And whereas progress against discrimination requires that we openly talk about, learn about, and confront racism, sexism, and inequality as a community. And whereas there is a long history of systematic inequities within our region which has adversely impacted the economic, health, educational, and housing outcomes of marginalized communities. And whereas we believe that local government plays a vital role in ending systematic racism and institutional biases that negatively impact members of our community. And whereas, as a council, commission, board, we value every community member and are committed to creating an equitable and." to creating an equitable and anti-racist system that honors and elevates all. And whereas we believe that we must provide ourselves, our staff, our community, the necessary time and resources to facilitate discussions of race, equal, inequality, excuse me, inequity, and privilege to foster a better understanding of our full history and celebrate our collective humanity. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Lathrow Village recognizes the United Way for Southeastern Michigan's 21-day equity challenge as an important opportunity to expand our knowledge and understand of the historic and persistent inequity, sorry, that play a role in our social and economic landscape here in southeastern Michigan. Be it further resolved, the City of Lathrow Village will sign on in support of the event as an official equity partner and encourage all municipal staff and members of our community to participate in the 21-day equity challenge to deeper, deepen our shared understanding of and develop our willingness to confront racism, sexism, and any other forms of inequity and inequity in our community. And this will be signed on this day, on this 16th day of May 2022.
All right, well, I will gladly make that motion. Considering what I've been going through. So, uh, I'll make the motion to approve the United Way, uh, for southeastern Michigan's 21-day equity challenge resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there further, any further discussion? And the reason why, again, I'm just saying that is because it really, out of the 11 years that I've been on council, I've never witnessed, well, let me not say that, only 11 years on council, I've never witnessed someone send the most derogatory, um, emails and pictures and just racist epithets to members of the council. And I'm sad about it because this is 2022, and it's unfortunate that this is something that we have to deal with. And it's also, um, on the heels of what happened in Buffalo, New York, that, uh, people of color are being systematically killed for no reason. And, um, I think that is just a sad day in our, uh, our world, and I hope that, uh, our Lathrow Village residents, employees, uh, members of boards really take this serious and, and take it to heart. Any further questions or comments?
I just want to, you know, say I'm on board with this resolution, and I would like to thank staff especially for being so, uh, like, caring, thoughtful to the whole situation. No need to go any further, but thank you so much. And council members.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Canes?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation for gun violence awareness day. You want to come up and explain what it is?
Sure.
Thank you.
I've got my, um, visuals too. Right here. It's right here in the museum, and then talking to the microphone.
Thank you so much. Okay. Hi, my name is Susan Yagassian, and I'm a resident of Southfield. And, um, I'm here to talk a little bit about Wear Orange, um, which is also known as Gun Violence Awareness Day. So the resolution, which I'm assuming will be read, speaks about a young woman, 15-year-old woman, young woman who was shot, um, I believe it was 2013, must have been after Obama's second inauguration. She was shot on the street randomly by a drive-by shooting, and her friends chose to honor her with this idea of remembering her every June around the time of her birthday, and wearing orange in particular because that's the color that hunters wear to avoid being shot. So, as Mayor just said, this is on the heels of a dreadful experience in, in Buffalo. And I think I have presented this to the council in past years. I know that this is something that is very easy to say yes to. I think we all need to think of what we can do beyond just saying, yes, we're aware of gun violence, because it's not only gun violence, it's a lot of other hatred going on. Unfortunately, uh, these, the large shootings that we see and hear of, they're just the tip of the iceberg. What's really, really frightening is there, uh, 2/3 of the gun violence in this country is, um, suicide, and another big percentage is homicide. So the 10 or 11 people there that we all feel so horrible about are nothing compared to the problems of guns that are left unsecured in homes and in cars and are readily available. So I just wanted to also say that, um, we support gun, um, safety education, not just for children, because just telling children don't tell, touch guns is not useful. We adults need to take that responsibility. So, um, I actually am a presenter for a program that's called Be Smart for Kids, which stresses the importance of S, um, safe storage, M, modeling appropriate behavior with guns, A, asking about guns in other people's homes where children may be going, R, recognizing the role of guns in suicide, and T, telling others about it. So, um, not just on June 3rd, but all year round, we need to be talking about gun violence and how it affects our community. So, thank you very much for having me here, and thank you for, uh, bringing gun violence up into the forefront again, because we can't just say, oh, yes, another shooting, and let it go by. So...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, um, can you guys make sure that the website is, can you share that with Suzie to make sure the website is on, uh, the, you know what I'm talking about, the, the electronic newsletter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do I have, um, well, to read the bottom of it, just to explain, and I hope I'm saying her name right. June, um, excuse me, January 2013, Hadia Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15, and on June 3rd, 2022, to recognize the 25th birthday of Hadia Pendleton. She was born June 2nd, 1997. People across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadia Pendleton and other victims of gun violence and the loved ones of those victims. Uh, it was an idea, just like what she was saying, was, um, inspired by a group of Hadia's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. Um, and we're asking for anyone to join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 3rd, the first Friday in June 2022, to help raise awareness about gun violence. And by wearing orange on June 3rd, 2022, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Kelly Garrett of the City of Lathrow Village declares the first Friday in June, June 3rd, 2022, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. I encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value all human lives.
Ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the National Gun Violence Awareness Day, Friday, June 3rd, 2022's proclamation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second to, uh, declare the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Canes?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Yeah, the last one for proclamation, we were, um, proclaimed or declared, excuse me, June, June 19th, 2022, June Awareness Day, Juneteenth Awareness Day. I so apologize for saying that. Whereas Americans of all colors, creeds, cultures, religions, and countries of origin sharing a common love and respect for freedom, as well as determination to protect their right to freedom through democratic institutions by which the tenets of freedom are guaranteed and protected. And whereas President Abraham Lincoln first issued the Emancipation Proclamation effective January 1st, 1863, freeing those enslaved in the South. However, Southern slave owners ignored that order. On June 19th, 1865, Union soldiers arrived in Galveston, Texas and enforced the president's order, freeing enslaved African-Americans, two and a half years after it was first decreed. This day has since come to be known as Juneteenth. And whereas for 150 years, Juneteenth, National Freedom Day, continues to be the most recognized African-American holiday observance in the United States. And whereas many African-Americans continue the tradition of celebrating Juneteenth as inspiration and encouragement for future generations. Juneteenth Day celebrations have been held to honor African-American freedom while encouraging self-development and respect for all cultures. And whereas this year marks the second Juneteenth event entitled Unity in the Community, a celebration of cultural diversity that's being held in Lathrow Village, an event that will feature entertainment, music, food trucks, and a panel discussion with community leaders. There will also be the recognition of diversity champions and the categories of a Lathrow Village business, a Lathrow Village residence, adults 21 and over, a Lathrow Village resident, which is a youth, 21 and under, and a Lathrow Village community group. Now therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Michael Kelly Garrett, together with Mayor Pro Tem Bruce Cantor, Councilmember Jalen Jennings, Councilmember Barbara Canes, and Councilmember Karen Miller of the City of Lathrow Village, hereby declare the 19th of June 2022 to be Juneteenth Awareness Day in the City of Lathrow Village. Be it further resolved that we express our appreciation to the Juneteenth Task Force and DDA Promotions Committee. We encourage all to recognize the historical significance of Juneteenth Day, support the continued celebration of Juneteenth to provide an opportunity for all people to learn more about the past, to better understand the experiences that have shaped the nation, and encourage the people of the City of Lathrow Village to observe Juneteenth and participate in ceremonies, activities, and programs, attested to this 16th day of May 2022.
I'll make a motion to approve Juneteenth Awareness Day's proclamation.
Second.
It's been moved in second, um, to declare June 19th, excuse me, June 19th, 2022, Juneteenth Awareness Day. Is there any further discussion?
Uh, I just wanted to say I am on the task force for Juneteenth Awareness Day, and so our celebration will take place on the 18th instead of the 19th, because the 19th is, uh, Father's Day, so we'll have a celebration the day before to celebrate Juneteenth. It'll be from noon to four, and like the proclamation said, we'll have vendors, storytellers, music, food, uh, bounce houses for the children, and, uh, I missed something, but it'll be a good time. So hopefully everyone comes out and enjoys the event. That's all I have.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Canes?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. City administrator, do you have anything? City of Ministry, please.
I do. Uh, Mayor and Council, uh, I did provide you a estimate from Big Dave's Tree Service. You asked, uh, you asked us to look into cleaning up the four vacant parcels, we call them triangle parcels, I guess, uh, that are around the city. They did provide an estimate. It talks about removing all the dead trees, clearing the brush, uh, grind all the stumps that are eight inches or more, as well as any trip hazards, uh, cleaning up all the underbrush and wood debris located on the properties, trimming all remaining trees as needed. Everything will be hauled away except for the stump grindings and ground mulch that is mixed in with the dirt, uh, which will be evenly distributed out through the properties. So this is our company that we use currently for trimming trees along, uh, along the city easements.
Thank you. Anyone have any question? Thank you. Do you have anything?
I don't have anything at this time.
I don't know if you want to go over the quotes for the elevator? I provided three quotes.
Thank you.
So I was asked to provide three quotes for the necessary work that needs to be done on the elevator. Uh, the original quote, uh, was from Kone. That was for refurbishing, excuse me, that was for replacing the interior panels, uh, in the elevator. That came out at 17,800, as well as, uh, adding emergency power operations for the ju, uh, for the elevator when we go on generator power. That was 30,577. That again was from Kone. Lardner Elevator combined both their quotes into a single quote, and they came out at 13,258. They're suggesting that we can just, that they can refasten the existing laminate, uh, panels, and then provide the, uh, uh, new install of emergency power visual indicator, pull the proper wiring, and provide the load testing. And then the third quote was from Otis Elevator. They again were going to replace the panels for $20,703, and for them to run the emergency power and all the wiring was $9,239.
So with Lardner, were you, are you confident that, so say the inspector comes, you know, so we spent the 13,000, right, and they glued it back? Say the inspector comes and says, uh, I'm not too sure. Like, so what do we do in that instance?
So if I'm understanding your question correctly, you're sent, you're asking if by just re, affixing or reattaching the panels, if that would be sufficient?
Right.
I believe it would be.
Okay.
Yes. It's just the fact that there, it's pretty visible that the panels are peeling, and as long as they can get the, uh, laminate to reattach or glue it back down, so to speak, it should be sufficient.
So that does, I remember you saying the inspector was pretty tough. So I'm just making sure that aligns with what he said.
Yeah, so the, the second thing they indicated was if, if the glue wouldn't fix the issue alone, they could add the, uh, stainless steel stripping along the edges to, again, to, uh, reattach it to the walls.
Okay.
And then how long do they give a, um, a guarantee for a certain amount of time for it to?
You know what, uh, Mayor, I did not get into warranties with them on that. That's something I can look into.
Only because if it's only, uh, you know, I don't want it just to be a patch work, and then next year we're, we're doing that again. That's just a, it's a major difference between Otis and, and Kone?
It's a major difference, you're correct.
So, Otis is just, um, so the 9,000, what does that cover again?
That's covering, covering the wiring of the new, uh, panel that they're going to have to put in that will indicate, um, that it's running on emergency power. So it's the wiring harness, and then they'll have to do the load test to make sure that elevator will operate correctly once we have the generator installed.
So they're not actually doing the work then, Otis?
Otis, no, Otis is going to do the work. Yes.
So, so that, that covers everything that Kone would be doing as well? The 9,000, or is, is another?
Well, no, they had, theirs was 20,000 for the panels.
I missed that.
It's on page 148.
It was almost 21,000 for the new panels, and then, uh, about 9,200 for the wire for the emergency power. The big difference, it, it sounds like to me, looking at these, is, uh, Lardner's quote is so much less because they're just going to reattach the existing panels versus replacing them.
We're not, are we voting on this, or we?
He's just giving us a...
Just an update.
Because I think that what, um, for me, I would like to see what the warranty is from Lardner, because that's just such a major difference between the two companies. And then with, um, Kone, that's who's been, um, maintaining our elevators all along, right?
Yes.
Well, it was the train elevator.
Okay. And of course, everyone should know who Otis is. I just never, I mean, not that I'm in the building, but I've never heard of Lardner.
And we do have $20,000 out there in repairs. We're still waiting for, um, all of the, all the parts to show up. We still don't have a ship date on the parts yet, and that, that is through Kone as well.
Oh, okay.
I do have one question?
Yes.
I'm looking at the notice of...
I'm looking at the notice of violation originally. And it does seem like the wall delamination, it didn't necessarily say we needed to replace it.
Correct.
So I think that will cover it. And then the second was the machine room. I don't see that addressed in the Lard, oh, that's something different. That's a plumber.
Something different. I actually have the, I have Nelson, Nelson Brothers Plumbing is scheduled to do that repair on May twenty-third. It's going to be a two-day, two-day project for him.
So it sounds like if you could get the warranty information from Lardner.
Correct.
We all might be inclined to work with Lardner.
Sounds good. I will get that information.
Maybe references?
What's that?
Maybe references in my pitch night?
So I met with the gentleman who actually owns Lardner. He actually worked for Detroit Elevator.
Oh, okay.
And all of his employees came from Detroit Elevator. They bought Lardner, so.
Okay.
They are really familiar with our elevator because they actually installed it way back when.
Oh, okay.
Cool.
Thank you. That kind of takes the anxiety down.
Reference?
Yes. It takes down the anxiety just a little. It's just such a big difference, and that's what it just, you know. Okay. Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay. Any reports from boards, commissions, or committees? Oh. City Attorney?
Oh, I have nothing to add.
Thank you.
No report.
I have now back to reports, boards, commissions, committees? None? Any unfinished or new business? None? Public comments. Speakers are limited to three minutes. You have to come to the podium chair. Three minutes. Anyone want to speak? Come on up.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Mike Arbo. I live on Santa Anne. I've been in the city for about eight years, but I just purchased my house this year. A couple of comments I had was number one, I was not specifically for the marijuana dispensary things that's going on, but I think you guys might want to look into, people who are buying those businesses are basically making millions of dollars. It's like a lottery to get it. Maybe you guys should look into if you're going to do it, and not saying me, I don't want to get involved, but you should give it to a city resident. Try to look at applications from people who actually live in the city. Excuse me. And I wanted to also say that the taxes, the property taxes in this city, when I bought my house, it's a value of about three hundred, it was four thousand dollars a year. So now I bought it, I got reassessed, the taxes are almost nine thousand dollars. A friend of mine just bought a house in Southfield for the same price, and it's five thousand. Nine thousand, you're going to price a lot of people out of the city at that rate, so anything you can do to try to save any kind of money, lower taxes, I don't even know how I'll sell my house in ten years if the taxes are that high. No one wants to pay ten thousand a year for taxes. That's all I really wanted to say.
Thank you. Maybe you got to answer. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, because I'm the city treasurer, I was going to say that if you look at your taxes, a lot of it is because the school has a supplemental millage. And when I first started here in two thousand, the tax rates for the homestead and non-homesteads were the same, and they're only about two mils difference right now. And the main majority that you guys are paying is that where non-homesteads have an eighteen mils, the school has asked for that eighteen mils for residents. That's why our taxes are as high as they are.
I just felt like Southfield is like a lot less.
Yeah, but that's what our taxes are, is a lot of it has to do with supplemental millage of the school. Because if you look at what the city's millage is, are, we're at twenty-four mils, but that's sink, well, no, actually, we have the road millage that was just put in last year, but then we're only at seventeen mils for the city, seventeen something for the city.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that's here that wanted to speak?
This is also extra for the council people that aren't here.
Okay. I'll make sure they put it in.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Ian Ferguson, Lathir Village. So I'm here because I want to make sure that we're moving in the right direction with, when it comes to the Southfield Public Schools. So the council has a liaison that is, should be communicating with the Southfield Public Schools. And prior to that person taking that position, I actually had the position for roughly five years. Mayor Brock, former Mayor Brock, appointed me to that position, and he ensured that he wanted to open the dialogue, to make sure that we're communicating effectively because the residents send their kids to Southfield Public School, and it's essential that we have a voice. My concern is that we're losing that voice because really I don't see anything happening with Southfield Public Schools as far as Lathir Village being at the table and trying to resolve those issues. As of today, we've really only had two meetings, one of which was kind of like a sabotage on January thirty-first where they showed up online and they were frustrated because we wanted to do a school. The second one, you guys had a joint meeting in Southfield, which was unproductive. And in the end, we need a liaison that could actually bring forth our issues and work to resolve those issues with Southfield Public Schools. The way I see it now, none of this is happening. So I'm going to ask that you put this on your agenda for future meetings where you discuss moving away from the current liaison. I am recommending that you appoint Jalen Jennings to this committee, to this liaison position for three reasons, three important reasons. Number one, Mr. Jennings is a graduate of Southfield Public Schools. Once you appoint him to this position, you will have an instant win because he has people that have tremendous respect for him that's on Southfield Public Schools. He comes with no baggage. I'm here to just add value, not vitriol. And the third most important thing is that most of the people that go to, most of the children and kids and teenagers that go to Southfield Public Schools see Mr. Jennings as their role model. That is a triple threat win for us. In order for us to move forward with the letter, which is the second page that I just passed out to you, you have to try to address these issues and add on to the issues as we move forward. This is just a blueprint of what we started five, six years ago. Yes, there has been turnover, but at the end of the day, we need someone in the position to move this relationship forward. And frankly speaking, these residents and parents that send their kids to Southfield Public Schools need this voice to be heard over there. And right now, it's not being heard at all. I don't know what the liaison is doing right now, the current liaison, but the last meeting, actually May second, when you had your meeting, there was a resident that came here. And I will continue afterwards if no one else is going to.
Thank you. I got it. Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak that's in-house? Hearing none, I thought I saw someone that was online. Mr. Fred Kay, did you want to speak? Saw your hand up. Nope. Okay. Anyone else? So according to Robert's Rules of Order, you can come up twice. Which, no, okay. I won't back. Okay.
Again, Ian Ferguson, so it's clear that we've had residents that's come here to request information from the liaison as well as this council. And those requests have fallen on deaf ears. And we can't have that. We've got to have a council that's moving in the right direction when it comes to this relationship, this specific relationship where if we don't have it, we have nothing. We really don't have anything. We don't have a leg to stand on. We certainly cannot move forward and get information or get what we really want, which is a better relationship and a partnership where we can actually bolster and promote Southfield Public Schools within Lathir. We don't have that right now. So I'm asking you to really put this on the agenda, discuss it, and really, you need to pivot away from the current liaison and move forward. The other observation I have is this building has to be ADA compliant. That means elevators have to work. We have multi-levels of handicapped people in Lathir Village. Maybe if you don't see that, you're really not looking. And the bottom line is you can't find elevator parts on Marketplace. That's just absurd and ridiculous for us to think that. And if you don't believe me, maybe you can talk to your ghostwriter lawyer, because the bottom line is this building has to be ADA compliant, and I respect the fact that these two individuals and the third one that's not here is working hard to make sure that's happening. Keith Brown cannot get up to the second floor. He works, he walks with a cane, and we can't have that. You know who Keith Brown is. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for any public comments, online or in-house. Hearing none, moving on to mayor and council comments. And are you, Leanne, reading the questions? Or do I, are we good?
Oh, well, I thought you kind of addressed them, but.
Do you want me just to read them?
Yeah, they were just the two from the, that we were going to address.
Okay, so.
For the new business, or the action requests.
Okay. If my phone stays up, I only have eleven. So this is which ones? Just the, under the new?
Yeah, the very last ones, under button number seven, action.
Okay. And so got a letter from Councilwoman Miller asking for these to be read into meetings. One, the resolution, no mow May, page one thirty-two, second paragraph, incentivizing, quote, incentivizing its citizens to take direct and meaningful action, unquote. Is there a plan and a budget? Who are the partnering organizations? The plan is not to mow your lawn, the residents, and that doesn't have a budget. It's rather not a resident wants to participate in it or not, that's totally up to you. And the plan is from May first until, I'm doing that setup. Thirty first, I'm doing that, was it the poem my mother made me read, no? So, yeah, that's it. And so who are the partnering organizations? I will have to actually look, but I'm thinking that that's going to be any organizations that's in the city, any business that wants to be a part of it. So that's why I take it as a partnering organization. The next one, the resolution, mayor's monarch pledge, sixth paragraph, quote, "City of Lathir Village has committed to planting pollinator-friendly species on city-owned property, encouraging, promoting, and providing resources for residents wishing to establish pollinator gardens and developing local property maintenance ordinances are sustainable and wildlife-friendly." Question is, is there a plan and a budget? The plan and budget would be coming out of the DDA budget where they can pick, well, they already have it in the budget where they can, they're going to be planting, and so they can plant flowers that attract pollinators and monarchs. And that is all the questions?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
You are very welcome. And I don't think that I have, oh, I did have something else that was sent to me, and that was regarding the hiring for the DDA. And again, which is in our, it's in the minutes from today that, and we discussed it in the study session, that the DDA, it's really its own entity, and it's where they can hire for open positions, a position that was just filled and who we introduced or talked about at our last meeting, I think it was on Monday? Was this past Monday that we said we hired?
Yes.
This last Monday that we hired Backfield Corey's position, which was the DDA assistant?
Project manager.
Project manager, I'm sorry. And that, again, as it says in the minutes, is that the city council does not run the day-to-day operations of the city. That is left for the city managers. And so the one position that we are responsible as a council is the city administrator position. And so that was something that was sent to me, and I guess more information will come from that. And I think that is all that I have at this point. Any other members have anything you want to add?
Still looking for generator, the Joan Price. Her neighbor had the generator. Yeah, you said you were going to check on that?
I, Suzie was checking on that, or Kelvin, they have to go to the basement to look for it now.
And does our elevator not work?
No, it works. It works.
What was he referring to?
It needs repairs.
Well, yeah. You were referring to the last meeting where you were saying that there was no ADA, there wasn't people that were ADA that needed to use the elevator.
On a day when the power's out.
I can't, I just know what he was, pardon me?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I, he made it sound like there's no power now, that he couldn't, the gentleman couldn't get up to the second floor.
I'm saying if and when there's no power, I believe, right? That's what we're.
That the generator would kick in, and that's when he would use the elevator, so. Anything else?
Oh, one more. Sign ordinance review. Do we have a sign ordinance? I feel like it was thirty days. Is it up to sixty? Where are we with that sign ordinance?
I would have to look at the ordinance.
Okay.
I don't study the ordinances every day, so I'm not sure.
Well, Planning Commission has a meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
So.
Oh, they put it in there?
I'm not sure if that's on their agenda or not, but I'm sure Jill is, the city's mayor would be on top of it, so.
Mm-hmm.
I'll see where that's at.
Any other comments? No?
Um, I'll just reiterate that we have, the Juneteenth event is June eighteenth from noon to four, as well as I'll reiterate that hopefully the city administrators can get us together with those budget hearing dates so we can get that handled, as well as I'll just, could you possibly send an email out to council as to what are the main items or what we need to do for the budget hearings to make that more of a smoother process? So I know it was stated in the meeting, but maybe if you, you know, just let us, let everyone know, then we can know what to look for during our budget hearings. And that is it for me.
All right, well, that was it for council comments. I would take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second it. Thank you all for coming.